Good evening. This is the meeting of the board commissioners for Monday, October 28, 2018. Let us start the meeting with the chairman of the board. Thank you. Jay Farrell, would you like to work with the president?
My pleasure. Anyone rise, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have your agenda before you. We need two motions. One is to either approve or modify the general agenda. And the second that we need is the approval of the consent agenda or modification.
Madam Mayor, I would like to add possibly a short closed session at the end of this regarding employee or personnel incident, please.
All right.
And then could I please add to new business number of, let me explain, the resolution of support for the welcome center.
And you've got that out here since, as you know.
I mailed it, I think, on Saturday.
All right. With those two additions, the addition of a closed session at the end and addition of an item as the first matter under new business, a resolution for the welcome center, do we have motion to approve the general agenda and/or the consent agenda?
One other thing, Madam Mayor. Just want to have this for the record. Last meeting that I voted on the pilot test and it got in the record as a no, but I, my intentions were to vote yes for that and no for the DOT betterments, the $13,000 handrails. And I just want to make sure that's on the record, that that's been straightened out.
So I will make the motion to approve the general agenda. And I'll do it now.
Okay. Motion by Michael Fiocca to approve the general agenda. Seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the modifications to the minutes that include those modifications you suggested.
Okay. I'll second.
Move by Michael Fiocca, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carried now.
Thank you.
All right. The first matter then is evidentiary hearing. We need a motion to go into evidentiary hearing. So you have two on the agenda tonight. Is there a motion? Tell move. Move by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fiocca. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carried now. We will hear first with respect to special use permit for a music studio. Victoria Bayless of the staff will lead up.
Madam Mayor, do you swear the witness?
Excuse me?
Do you swear the witness?
Do we swear both at the same time? We're both evidentiary hearing. There's no one signed up to speak for the special permit, special use permit for the music studio. There are several people signed up to speak on the second public hearing with respect to Tillman Communication. So if it is your intention to speak, if you have signed up or if you have not signed up, would you then please stand to be sworn. Staff, if you do. All right. Then if you will, repeat after me. I swear that the evidence that I shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, without be gone. Thank you. Victoria Bayless will start with us on the first agenda. The applicant is here with respect to the music studio. Does he wish to be heard or does he need to be sworn? Did you swear?
I did swear.
Okay.
Powerpoint. Okay. All right. This is special use permit 2019-03. Luke McMahon is requesting a special use permit to operate a music studio along US Highway 64 Business West on parcel 70062. The site is zoned RA2 residential agriculture, 2 acre minimum, where music studios are required to obtain a special use permit. The applicant is proposing to use the existing structure on the property for the studio. And staff would like to enter into evidence as exhibit one, the information provided to us by the applicant, which has been included in your board packet. The recommendation is to hold the evidentiary hearing. Following this hearing, the matter will be forwarded to the planning board for review and then back to the board of commissioners with the planning board's recommendation.
So we will receive the matters in the packet as evidence and that will, is that the statement on behalf of the staff? And did you wish to speak?
Yeah.
If you had any questions? Do we have questions with respect to this inquiry?
Yes, and this could be for the applicant or for staff. Are there any site improvements proposed?
To the building?
No, on the site. This one is for staff. Does staff find the site plans to be complete?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for Luke McMahon or staff?
I just have one question. It's really irrelevant, but are you planning on using the back building back there also for a studio?
Not at this time.
Just the front building?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of a workshop.
Okay.
Really? It's more of like a, like for work and stuff.
Just curious.
Is there anything further by the board? If not, is there a motion to close the evidentiary hearing with respect to this item? And then, move by Stephanie Foley, seconded by Michael Fiocca. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I'd like to, those opposed, motion carried. Second evidentiary hearing is with respect to the Tillman Communication Tower at Mitchell's Chapel Road. And again, Victoria Bayless will lead up in staff recommendation.
Thank you. This is special use permit 2019-0. Tillman Infrastructure is proposing the construction of a communication tower at the intersection of Mitchell's Chapel Road and Austin Horton Service Road on parcel 68162. The site is zoned RA2 residential agriculture, 2 acre minimum, where communication towers over 50 feet in height are required to obtain a special use permit. The proposed tower is to be 300 feet in height and located close to the center of the 23 acre parcel. The tower is located at least 100 feet from any residence, and new vegetation will be planted to meet the screening requirements of the ordinance. Staff would like to enter into evidence as exhibit one, the information provided to us by this applicant, which has been included in your board packet. The recommendation is to hold the evidentiary hearing. Following the hearing, this matter will be forwarded to the planning board for review and back to the board of commissioners with the planning board's recommendation.
Thank you. And so we will accept the board's package into evidence for this hearing, and we will next hear from the applicant. I believe it would be appropriate to go in that order. And so if the applicant will then make it presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the board. My name is Karen Kimwright, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fox Rothschild in Raleigh. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is Tillman Infrastructure. I'm also here on behalf of the property owners, which, who are Lynn and Ellen Mann. And Mr. Mann is seated, some kind of trouble, he's waved his arm back there, seated to the right-hand portion of the room toward the back, and also Verizon. And with me today is Mr. Mann, who I just introduced, Jim Warner, who is a representative of Tillman, Safna Mohanen, who is a representative of Verizon, and David Smith, who is a licensed certified real estate appraiser. And this is Tillman's application for special use permit so that it may construct a 300-foot guide wire tower that will be located on Mr. and Mrs. Mann's property. And I'd like to back up because this application should probably sound familiar to the board because the public hearing was held back in April, I believe, on this application. And after the public hearing, we went before the planning board about a month later, and the planning board considered the request, and we received a unanimous recommendation of approval from the planning board. We were supposed to have come forward before, for a final vote before the board of commissioners about two weeks ago. But what we determined shortly before the hearing is that there had been a very technical deficiency in the notification that was provided in advance of the original public hearing. And because of that technical deficiency, I had some communications with the planning staff and Mr. Messick, and we determined that because notice, notice had in fact been provided, but because the notice did not have the technical language that's required by the statute, that we wanted to make sure that the process complied with the statute or requirement. And so Tillman and I agreed to come back and start the process over again with a new public hearing. So that is why we are here again this evening with a new public hearing on this application. So we appreciate the board's willingness to hear this application again and for your patience as well. And so what I'd like to do is to take just a couple of minutes to walk the board through the application and to show that we have met all of the specific requirements of the ordinance and then also all of the requirements for the special use standards. And in doing so, I'll provide some information about the location for the tower and then the plans for the tower as well. So the tower will be located on Mr. Mann's property, which is a large parcel. It's about 24 acres in size, and the property is zoned RA2. And as the board knows, cell towers are permitted on RA2 property with a special use permit. And Mr. and Mrs. Mann's property is used for agricultural purposes. And where the property is located, it is located directly adjacent to Highway 64. And in between the parcel and Highway 64 is the Austin Horton Service Road that separates the parcel essentially from Highway 64. It's also located immediately west of Mitchell's Chapel Road. And the property is located in the town's extraterritorial jurisdiction, and it's located about 1.15 miles west of the town. And the tower itself is going to be located in the northeastern portion of the property off of, again, off of Mitchell's Chapel Road. And since the property is used for agricultural purposes, a good portion of the property has been cleared, but then the area to the west of the parcel is very heavily wooded, so there's a substantial wooded buffer to the west of the property. And Tillman's plans are to lease a 100-foot by 100-foot leased area of the property. And then what Tillman will also be doing is they'll be installing a service road. And I wanted to provide just a little bit of information about the service road. The service road had originally been planned to be located to come off of the service road, off of Austin Horton Service Road. But Mr. Mann spoke with Tillman, Tillman Infrastructure, and requested that the service road be shifted to the opposite portion of property, to the southeastern portion of the property, so that it could be moved away from the Greenleafs property, which is the, they have the residence that would be located about 500 feet from the tower location. And so we attempted to accommodate some of their concerns by shifting the access road away from their property. And then also, the tower is going to be located a great distance from all of the property lines and from the nearest residence, which is the Greenleafs residence. It's going to be located 691 feet from, to the east from Mitchell's Chapel Road, 508 feet from the property line to the north, 422 feet from the property to the south, 366 feet to the property to the west, and then a little more than 500 feet from the nearest residence. And I think it's important to mention that I'll, that I'll provide some information about the technical requirements of the ordinance for cell towers. But the ordinance requires that cell towers be located at least 100 feet from any residence. So this tower will be located about five times the required distance from the nearest residence. We also are going to be installing a significant amount of landscaping. And in the site plans, and going back to the distances, that is located, that information is provided on page C1.1 of the site plans, and then on page C2.1, there's information about the landscaping. And so the landscaping will be provided around the 80-foot by 80-foot fenced compound. And then in addition, there'll be an extensive amount of landscaping that's going to be provided along the southern property line. And then along the southern property line, which is the property line that's adjacent to the nearest residence, there will be about 422 feet of landscaping that will be installed to buffer that residence. And then our application demonstrates that this is an appropriate location for a cell tower. This is an agricultural parcel, as I mentioned before. And then once the cell tower has been constructed, Mr. and Mrs. Mann's property will be able to continue to be used for agricultural purposes, and this will be able to help to maintain the agricultural and rural character of the area. And then also, I've mentioned a couple of times, but I think this is significant for citing cell towers. But the cell tower location is going to be directly adjacent to Highway 64, and cell towers are common, and it's a, considered to be good planning, planning strategy to locate cell towers along major highway corridors like Highway 64. And also, because, as I mentioned, because it's such a large parcel of about 24 acres, the application for the, for the cell tower is able to greatly exceed the ordinance requirements for, for spacing, including spacing from the residences. And this application is, is important for both Tillman and for Verizon. And we've included in our application materials propagation maps and studies. And those propagation maps and studies provide evidence that Verizon will be able to continue to provide excellent coverage in the area surrounding the tower. And then the area where coverage will be provided will be the western area of Pittsboro along Highway 64 and the surrounding area. And so this will ensure for those travelers along Highway 64 that no, no calls will be dropped and, and that also there will be excellent service in the surrounding area. And so I'd like to move on to talk very specifically about how we have met or exceeded all of the requirements of the ordinance. And the requirements of the ordinance are contained under section 5.3. And the technical, technical requirements for cell tower are provided under section And first of all, cell towers are permitted as a special use on the property which is going to be located. The section 5.3.353 also provides, as I mentioned, that 100-foot separation requirement for residences. And here, that requirement will be exceeded by about five times. Another requirement of the ordinance is that all guide wires must be located on the property which is to be located. And as, as our site plans demonstrate, the guide wires will all be contained within the Mann's property. We've also complied with fencing requirement because a six-foot tall security fence will be installed around the facility. And then again, I've already mentioned the landscaping, but we have complied with the landscaping requirement by landscaping and screening around the fenced compound and then also along the 422 adjacent property. And so since the specific requirements of the ordinance have been met, we have met our burden for issuance of the special use permit. And under North Carolina law, the special use permit is required to be issued unless an opponent comes forward with competent substantial and material evidence that the requirements have in fact not been met. And that is based upon a North Carolina Supreme Court case called Woodhouse versus Town of Nags Head, and then a number of cases that follow the Woodhouse case. And the Tillman application, we have gone well beyond the requirements of the law because we have demonstrated that the technical, technical requirements have been met. And then we also have provided information and evidence that the special use requirements have also been met. And in regard to those special use standards under section 5.3 of the ordinance, we have shown that the tower use will not materially endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. This new tower site will allow Verizon to continue to provide excellent coverage in the area. And as, as the board understands very well, I'm sure, wireless telecommunications services are in great demand by town residents, residents across the state and across the country, of course, as more and more people rely upon their cell phones and wireless services. And also, this tower will ensure that the coverage in this area of the town will continue to, will continue to be available and that the coverage that is along Highway 64 leading into the town of Pittsboro will be excellent as well. And this continued coverage will also protect the public health and safety so that residents and those traveling through the area will have, continue to have access to 911 services. And the radio emissions are, will comply with all federal laws, including FCC standards. And then the second special use standard is that the tower will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. And the tower will be located, as I've mentioned, on a large 24 acre parcel that's used for agricultural purposes that's directly adjacent to Highway 64. And cell towers are extremely low-impact type of uses, and they are not considered to be any type of nuisance or hazard due to traffic, noise, odor, or environmental type of hazards. In regard to traffic, the traffic that will be generated by the cell tower, once it's been constructed, will be very minimal, only about one to two vehicle trips per month, and that's for maintenance, maintenance purposes only. And cell towers obviously do not have any type of environmental hazard, and they do not produce any type of odor or noise. And we've already demonstrated that we have met the separation requirement required by the ordinance. We've also included in our application a property impact report that's been prepared by David Smith, who is a North Carolina certified real estate appraiser. And he is here today and will walk the board through his report. And Mr. Smith's expert opinion is that the cell tower will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. And then the third standard is that the tower will be in harmony with the intensity, scale, and character of development existing or planned in the surrounding area. Again, as I've, much of, some of this information I've already mentioned before, so I won't repeat it except for to say that the parcel is used for agricultural purposes and that it is located directly adjacent to Highway 64 and the service road. This is again, a low-impact use for the reasons that I just mentioned, generating little traffic, having no environmental hazards, and generating no noise or odor. And the law in North Carolina is that when a town or a county includes in its ordinance that a use is permitted in a particular zoning district as a conditional or a special use, that the prima facie case has been made that the use will be in harmony with the area. So there is a prima facie case that the tower is in harmony with the area. And then we also provided quite a bit of information in our application to demonstrate that the, that the tower is in conformity with the land use plan. And very similar to the law that I just mentioned, the law in North Carolina is also provides that if a use is included in a jurisdiction, a specific zoning classification as a special use or a conditional use, then there are prima facie cases been made that the use is in conformity with the land use plan. So with that information, I would ask that, I think Ms. Bayless had already done so, but I'd ask that our application be admitted into the record. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I will, if you don't have any questions, I'll call David Smith to provide some information about his property report.
Thank you. Yes, the application is in evidence.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of questions. Because there's quite a bit of information here, and a lot of it was fairly redundant and presented in several different formats. And one thing that I found difficulty with was determining what was exhibit one. There was nothing in the packet labeled as exhibit one, but I assumed it was the materials preceding exhibit two.
Oh, it's all the information in the packet that you received?
Well, there are specific preferences to see exhibit one for discussion at this point or exhibit two. And what I think is exhibit one is actually making reference to the town of Halifax, which I saw. And then inside the document, there are several references to portions of the ordinance that don't exist in our ordinance or reference, other sections of the ordinance. You cited the ordinance correctly, but there are references in this evidence leading us to temporary signs requiring a permit in some sections that don't exist. So as far as cleaning that up, because I think what you stated in the podium was accurate, this also says that this must be heard by the board of adjustment. So I think I'd like to know the process for cleaning up this type of evidence and knowing that we can only receive them as a public hearing, how to manage that process.
Well, our application materials provide, our, the evidence we've submitted into, that we've asked to be included in the record, include our application with the technical information and then along with the narrative that is included with our application and then the evidence we're presenting before the, before the board of commissioners. And so I would ask that, that, that the totality of the information that's presented, along with the evidence that's going to be presented this evening, be admitted into the record and that any sort of technical mistakes or oversights, that that be corrected through evidence, through my discussion this evening and through the evidence that's going to be presented. be presented through the witnesses.
Mr. Smith, do you have any guidance on this matter?
To the extent that it's written.
Which is something I can easily go back to. When I have got a question analyzing information, thinking about processing the information, I can easily go back to something right, as opposed to listening to a tape. And I think others would be the same.
To the extent that there are typographical errors in the documents, I think they will be revised and be corrected with the subsequent filing. To the extent that there's a substantive change, that information could be presented in terms of a condition. I'm not sure exactly what difference it makes as far as the evidence.
I think making references to sections of the ordinance that don't exist is a problem. I think making references to sections of the ordinance that refer you to a temporary sign permit as opposed to a cell tower special use permit, I think is problematic in the evidence.
The applicant certainly could correct all of those deficiencies. And probably you could continue this hearing until such time as they do that, or give them an opportunity to do that.
Those are just simple mistakes. It doesn't change the substance of the application. But if you would like for us to, we could, without changing any substance, correct those inadvertent errors in the application.
Well, I would lean towards holding the hearing open, but knowing our process, we need to close it to send it to the planning board.
Yes.
Right. So.
I thought you were sending the board to next thing.
Yeah, well, and honestly, I would challenge our process because I think when the planning board makes a recommendation, I'd like to hear that and be able to consider it. I'd like to hear staff's analysis and be able to consider their analysis. They are our experts. And to do that, we need to be in a public hearing. So if there's a way to modify our process by holding it open and letting this go to the planning board and letting the planning board staff come back with that information, that would be a part from our current process, but I would not want to jeopardize the hearing by introducing that change to our process comply. So if you were to receive additional information from the planning board and staff, I think you would have to advertise it for them in the public hearing.
I'm not sure that's necessarily so. Again, it depends on the nature of the deficiency that you addressed. The chief testified, as you put it correctly, and to the extent that her testimony trunks whatever is in the litigant document, then you all have to consider the totality of the evidence that you have received. In order for the errors to be corrected, I think we'd have to keep the hearing open.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the extent that there are any other interested parties who might object to that.
Right, I'm not making the motion to do that right now. I think we're in a public hearing.
If I might, I'm here on behalf of SBA Sites, I'm Bob Foley, a grow law firm in Chapelville. I appeared before you back last time we were here and from the planning board last time. And I think that the technical though they may be, the errors need to be corrected. I mean, the law is that it has to be strict procedural compliance with the ordinance, otherwise the decision you make can be overturned. I have some other procedural issues that I think need to be addressed also that can't be addressed tonight. Can be addressed tonight, but can't be corrected tonight. So I would submit that the best course for the board is to continue the hearing and let them fix their errors and publish anew, get this process started all over again.
Not hearing the motion to accomplish that, I think then we would continue, Karen Camerus, to continue to hear the testimony. So is it your intention next to call David Smith, the appraiser?
Yes, we will call David Smith as the next witness.
Good evening. My name is David Smith. I live in Durham, North Carolina, and I am a state-certified general real estate appraiser. I also hold the MAI and the SRA designation of appraisers.
I want to begin by just asking you some preliminary questions. As you already stated your name and your address.
Yes.
And can you state your current occupation, please?
I am a state-certified general real estate appraiser.
And how long have you been a state-certified general real estate appraiser?
Ever since they had licenses that had allowed it.
Okay. Approximately?
Forty years.
Thirty years?
Forty years, approximately, thirty-five, forty years.
And what is your current status of employment?
I'm self-employed.
And can you describe your educational background?
I attended Duke University, and I've had numerous courses. For to get the MAI designation, you have to go through a fairly rigorous courses and tests. It's sort of like getting a CPA. You can be an accountant and not be a CPA. You can be an appraiser and not be an MAI. It's just a different level.
And is your educational background and credentials contained within the property report that was included with the application that was submitted?
Yes, it is.
And this time, we'll extend from Mr. Smith, an expert in real estate appraising. And can you tell the board what you were asked to do in regard to this matter?
I was asked to give my opinion as to whether or not this tower would ever still affect the property.
And can you provide, walk the board through your analysis and your report and explain your analysis and the conclusions that you reached as far as the property. And I'll ask you to just give us your own thoughts.
What I did, the way you determine something like this is you find what's called match pairs. You find a property, two properties that are similar. One is near a tower and one is away from a tower. And I located one in south of Pittsboro on Old Sanford Road. I don't know if you all familiar with it. But there's a 250-foot tower directly behind this property. So I looked at that property, then I found seven other properties. They're all in the Pittsboro elementary school district. That was sort of where I looked. They were similar in size, similar in age, and made adjustments, just like an appraiser would when they were appraising a house or a bank. And when I did that, I got down to the first square foot value after making all the other adjustments of that property that's right next to the tower versus the other properties. And there was a range with those other seven properties, but the average of those properties was actually less than the first square foot value of the property that's right next to the tower. Also, there's a subdivision in Holly Springs where one of the residential lots actually has a cell tower on it. So what I did with that was I looked at the properties that were next to that cell tower or right across the street from it, and did the same sort of analysis to make adjustments between that, those properties and those that were further away from the tower. And again, I found no significant difference in the selling prices of those right next to that tower versus those that were further away in the subdivision.
And so did you provide an opinion, an expert opinion, about whether the Tillman Tower will substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties?
Based on my analysis, it will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining and abutting properties.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we need to continue with Karen and Kimera. Are there additional witnesses with respect to your position?
Right, and the property owner, Mr. Mann, would like to testify as well.
I may well have enough to cross-examine the business.
So.
It depends on whether you're a party or not. Well, SBA Sites is the owner of the tower that's right down about here, about 2,200 feet away from this site. And I'm here on their behalf as an interested party in the application. As a matter of fact, the tenant that proposed the Tillman Tower would be coming off white lines tower if this application were granted at the tower's bill. So he feels that he's got a substantial, special interest in this application different than anybody else.
All right, well, we'll need to make a certification of that, and so we will do that when this happens. Right now.
Well, that time will be, uh...
Well, that time will come when testimony would be issued from interested parties. And if you qualify as an interested party, generally we would...
They don't have the right to cross-examine?
Uh, we would here. Actually, first of all, the board here, I just asked me to be able to ask a question of Mr. Smith, so let us continue with that particular portion.
Seth?
Yes.
Good evening. You had mentioned in your report that it was based on plans dated February of this year. The plans we have, of course, now are dated September of this year. Are there any changes in those plans that would adjust your opinion of the value to adjoining properties?
Ian, my concern was the height of the tower, and that has not changed.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, with respect to cross-examination of the witnesses for the applicant, procedurally we wait until such time as those persons are determined to be interested parties? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Your policy says that you will hear from the applicant, and that means all the witnesses for the applicant before you hear from anybody else.
I'll call the property owner, Mr. Mann, please.
Landman, property owner, well, I love my sister, and I'm the spokesman for the family. And when Tillman came to us asking about the tower there, and my first thought was, I didn't really want a tower, but as they looked at it and they put it in the back corner of the property that I actually can't use, if I go below that property line, it'd be a swamp buster act. It's flooded land, so I can't use it. So that would make that corner of the property more profitable. But the only way I would consider, even talking with them, I told them I wanted to move the road to the north end of the property so it would be a property boundary at the north end because it never had been anything but open land. So with the road on the north side of the property, going to the cell phone tower, that would give the new property owners a boundary where they knew exactly where the road would be. And I also wanted to get the road away from the back end of the other people's property. And he felt like I was being a good neighbor, and that was my main objective. And I also asked about any type of health issues, and I knew it made no noise, it made, you know, it didn't dilute, so I couldn't see any. I didn't see a problem with the tower. If y'all have any questions, I'm trying to answer.
And Karen Camer, do you have additional questions?
I have one additional witness waiting.
Okay. Any further questions from the studio?
I can have a question. I'm curious about, I am curious about the fact that you said that it floods, it's in the water. Is that, I'm wondering, I assume that this has been looked at, this is not a wetland or?
It is a wetland, that's why I can't clear any further.
But towers are allowed in a wetland?
It's, no, behind the property is a wetland. Actually, where the tower's going is not a wetland.
Okay. And there's an adequate buffer, is there? Has it been, uh, followed?
Yeah, they did a top survey of every acre, but I don't get it.
I want to clarify.
There's a plug for you there.
All right. Thank you. And I'll call Stathen Mahannon with Horizon, please. Can you provide your name and address for the board, please?
Stathen Mahannon. My address is 8921 Research Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina.
And with whom are you employed?
Horizon Marlowe.
So what is your position with Horizon?
I'm a principal in, principal engineer in real estate.
And how long have you worked with Horizon?
This is my seventh year.
And is Horizon currently located on the SBA tower that's located about a half a mile from the Tillman site?
We are.
And if, once the Tillman Tower has been constructed, what are Horizon's plans?
We will, when we are able, we will terminate our lease with SBA and move to Tillman. This is just strictly a customer experience focus.
Yeah. Well, can you explain the reasons that Horizon is looking to move to the Tillman Tower and the opportunities that this would be providing Horizon for providing its resources in other areas?
It will be a cost saving completely. Our focus is the customers, is our customers, and any kind of cost savings we have, we would put back into the tower in, by way of upgrades and equipment and technologies, which we are limited by doing, by staying on the SBA tower.
And would there be a significant cost savings if you were able to relocate to the Tillman Tower?
Yes, about 40%. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the witness?
Questions?
Thank you. That is all the evidence I have at this point. I'd like to have an opportunity for rebuttal at the end, if possible.
Thank you. And let us take the... Could we come back for some additional questions?
Ma'am, I have a question regarding the appraisal. I know you appraised, you and all of that, but let me ask you that. There is a current cell tower. So what would the appraised values for the properties around that current cell tower? Had it been a decrease of the result of that cell tower being placed there?
I did a little research on that cell tower. It's on a two-acre site, and the properties around it on three sides is a 22-acre that's owned by the same person, and it is not sold. So I couldn't get any evidence about any effect on value, one way or the other, for that property.
The next parcels were not. I know they're all wooded.
Right, it's like kind of a U shape around it, and it's all, it's like 24 acres owned by this one lady. And the tower is close to the road, so there's nothing that's next to it that's not owned by somebody else, and nothing is sold. Okay?
And let us go back to our sign-up sheet. And I would propose that Tim and Captain Greenlee be heard next.
Hello, my name's Tim Greenlee. We got the property south, the cell tower is proposed. Could I get some clarification on something?
Yes, sir.
They speak of 24 acres, does that include, is that just the cleared area or is that counting the wooded area to the west?
Karen, can that clarification be given by you or by Mr. Mann?
It is the entire parcel.
Also, from Mr. Smith, he spoke of getting appraisals for 250-foot towers, it's gone to 300-foot. Do you want to clarify that? Okay, our family's moved into Pittsboro about 13 years ago. We purchased our land from our very close neighbors, Fay and John Braxton, and they're also related to Mr. Mann. The land we purchased from them was a field of corn and hay. We had a dream home built and carefully planted trees and shrubs and landscaped our yard. Now, a decade later, we're enjoying the fruits of our labor. It makes all of our years that we lived here so enjoyable. Our property, our property now looks like we hoped it would. Mr. Mann's property from my back door is approximately 50 feet from behind my house to his property line, and that's equivalent to three and a half car lengths. There will be a guide wire on the edge of our yard. I ask that everyone drive to the front of my house on 172 Alston Horton Service Road and visualize what they would see every time I come home from work and look down the driveway. The cell tower... The cell tower would appear to be coming out of my back porch. My wife and I know this is about big money, and the gentleman and his wife will go back to their nice house overlooking the mountains or where they state their front and receive a paycheck from this tower. Meanwhile, the beauty of our home will be diminished. I personally would not buy a home with a cell tower so close to the property, and I'm sure you wouldn't either. And I'm not a real estate person, but I just wouldn't do it. For the sake of our investment, I ask that you find a new location. I know they have other locations that aren't so intrusive. I ask that you think hard about this situation and not about the money. Thank you very much. But I also have pictures that I took of our property that I can pass around, that you can kind of look at and see the proportion of that cell tower in front of our house and one they proposed to put behind our house.
Thank you, Mr. Greenlee. And Kathleen Greenlee.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Kathleen Greenlee. My husband just spoke. Our property, in particular, the dwelling, is located immediately adjacent to the Tillman Communications proposed site for this three-hundred-foot cell phone tower. We did attend the previous public hearing regarding this matter, and we're still intent on ensuring that it doesn't move forward. At the last meeting, the attorney for the Tillman Company insinuated that this is strictly a rural neighborhood and that there would be little to no impact on any nearby residential properties. The proposed site abuts two residential properties, and it also faces residential homes on the other side of Mitchell Chapel Road. Further, no one from Tillman notified us or any of our neighbors about the plan, save the adjoining property owner who lives in Raleigh, but not on the property nearby. I only became aware of this when I saw a public hearing sign on the land behind us, and I called the planning board to find out what was going on, and it wasn't until two days later that I received a notice from the county in the mail. This happened again last week. I saw the sign in the field, I called the planning board, I was notified of another meeting, and the notice didn't come until the next day. Having such a structure so close to private residences would logically deter people from deciding to purchase our home should we ever decide to sell it. Any logical person doesn't have to look for statistics to tell them that having a tower that is three-hundred feet high and enormous and unattractive in appearance so close to the dwelling would decrease its desirability to anyone looking to buy the home. That's just common sense. In my previous appearance here, I pointed out the purported health impacts of living in such close proximity to a structure of this nature. That argument hasn't changed. Due to the relatively current introduction of this type of technology, it will take some time for research data to be collected and construed. However, there's already evidence to suggest that exposure to electromagnetic fields increases a person's risk for certain illnesses, including those related to the reproductive system, having the potential to increase the risk of miscarriage in women, and it can produce testicular abnormalities in men, which can be passed on to their children in the form of chromosomal deficiency and spinal cord tumors. Of chief concern is the fact that exposure to this type of electromagnetic emissions these kind of towers produce is the fact that children seem to be more vulnerable to negative effects, especially in the forms of cancers like childhood leukemia. We have a nine-year-old child in our home. We're concerned that she could be potentially exposed to this type of risk, not only from the already existing tower, which I can see when I sit on my front porch, now I can sit on my back porch and see another. We're surrounded now on both sides. Our neighbors all around us have young children as well, and I'm sure they hold similar concerns. Further, there's a very active church just beyond these residential properties that's attended by a large congregation of adults and children alike. As I stated previously, these are early findings of adverse health impacts of such a structure, and I'm sure every cell tower company's going to tell you there's no impact to public health. They don't know yet. It hasn't been long enough yet for them to determine that. The aforementioned health risks would logically increase as proximity to such towers increases, and having two towers within such close range of our neighborhood is daunting and frankly frightening to me. I beseech you to reconsider this location. Yes, they're going to make a lot of money, and maybe somebody will save money and somebody will lose money, but I don't care about money. I care about the place where I live, and it's the only place I've got. We'd like to live out our days there. I'm a high school teacher here in Chatham for fourteen years. I don't plan on going anywhere. All of my children were raised here and graduated from Chatham schools. I don't want to move, but I feel like I might be forced to. Anyway, we don't want to have this unsightly and unhealthy structure for a neighbor. We'd rather have people or the corn and hay that we've been living next door to for the last fourteen years. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen Greenlee. Next, I need to inquire about who is Joyce and Sidney who were signed up to speak? Are those persons who are neighbors or affected interested parties?
We own property. I think it's south, the animals' advantage property.
Okay, very good. Then we will hear from you next. I'm assuming that everybody who is testifying has indeed taken the oath, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Sidney Taylor. At present, I reside at 106 Donna Ross Drive in Raleigh, North Carolina, and we own property west, as I was corrected. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak before you this evening. My family owns property adjacent to the property where the proposed tower was set, and is listed under Joseph C. Taylor. And I don't think any of the objections to the, none of us object to the technology that the tower may bring. But having assessed to it, we will suffer at what cost. Putting cell towers near residential properties is just bad business, I think, for our communities. For residential owners, it's bad business because it decreases property values. For local businesses like realtors and brokers who will be listing these properties, it's bad business because of decreased income. For the town of Pittsburgh, it's bad business because of reduced property values, which is also represented by reduced revenue and property taxes. The New York Times of eight twenty-seven, twenty-ten stated that property values can be decreased from four percent to as much as ten percent, depending on how, how high the tower is and how close it is to your property. The Appraisal Institute, which services ninety-one countries, estimate that properties near towers can decrease from twen, from two percent to as much as twenty percent, again, depending on the proximity and the height. This proposed tower is three hundred feet, and if you consider it as a building, at ten feet per four, you're talking about a thirty-story building. Again, we do not object to technology, our cell phone technology. We do object to the huge monstrosity proposed to be erected in this residential neighborhood. Three hundred feet of towering metal is not anyone's idea of a beautiful landscape, not homeowners, not prospective buyers. And by the way, according to Tillman, AT&amp;T, and Verizon's website, as they pertain to towers, they state that their goal is to erect towers where there are none now. There is already an existing tower in this small neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Sidney Taylor. And Joyce is-
We're together from Japan.
Okay, thank you. All right, then the next speaker, can I identify Amanda Price, please? Is Amanda Price here, and if so, are you a property owner, or are you?
I'm with Horizon Marlowe.
I'm sorry, with Horizon, okay. And did you want to speak?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Next, then, is Jim Horner from Lewisburg, North Carolina. Jim?
No, I'm good.
Then Bob Horneck is then the last speaker to be heard, and, and is there a question with respect to his status as an interested party? If so, we hear that first.
I think Mr. Horneck needs to show, or at least tell you, members of the board, how his client would be an interested party.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I thought I had tried to do that a few minutes ago anyway, but my client is SBA Sites LLC. They are the owner and the operator of the cell tower. That's about twenty-two hundred feet away to the south, on the south side of sixty-four. They're going to be directly affected by this, by your decision, if Tillman can build its tower. And we've heard, we've heard at least two witnesses for the applicant saying that ATT Verizon is going to leave SBA's tower and go to the new tower. They're going to break their lease to go to the new tower. From my perspective, if the standard is, shows special damages different from anyone else in the community that would result from your action, my client clearly meets that standard. If you approve this tower, it'll get built, couple tenants at least are going to leave my client's tower to my client's detriment, will be negatively affected. And based on that alone, I suspect that my client, SBA, has standard, standing to participate in this hearing.
But SBA does not own the property that the tower situated upon.
Just as Tillman does not own the property that its tower is situated.
But if they have, so?
What, they have a long-term lease, they own the facility there. So, so they have as much of a standing as Tillman does to make its application.
Tillman has made the application. You're trying to intervene in the application.
Yes, yes, I am. If my client doesn't have standing to participate, then how does Tillman, as a non-owner of the property-
Because they paid their fee and submitted their application.
If it costs me two hundred dollars to participate, I'll pay two hundred dollars. But I mean, that's a little bit facetious there, Paul, but, but my argument is that based on the facts that they testified to, and that I've just presented to you, my client has standing to participate in the proceeding.
All right. And Karen, Karen, what's your use?
Yes, and may I be heard briefly?
Yes.
And the, so let me begin by saying that the issue is not whether SBA Towers is an interested person or an interested party, is whether SBA Towers has standing to participate in any way. And I have prepared a legal memo I'd like to pass up to the board that I'll explain briefly. So the law in North Carolina, based upon statutory law and based upon case law, is very clear about standing. And SBA does not have standing to participate in any respect in this proceeding, and it does not have standing to participate by presenting testimony, by presenting evidence, presenting any type of argument, or cross-examining any witnesses, or calling any witnesses in this proceeding. So as you know, Tillman Infrastructure has standing. Tillman is the applicant to the special use permit application for the property that's owned by Mr. and Mrs. Mann, and this is a hearing on a special use permit application. It is a quasi-judicial proceeding. It is a proceeding which is required to gather relevant and admissible evidence. It's not an opportunity for opponents to the application without standing to present evidence or to cross-examine witnesses. And I'd like to provide the difference between a hearing that is a quasi-judicial hearing and a hearing that is a rezoning, for example. So a rezoning is a legislative matter, and you would have a legislative type of a hearing. And during a legislative type of a matter, residents are, are able to come and provide testimony and evidence without having to establish standing. However, for a quasi-judicial matter, in order for a person to come and provide any type of information to the board, you have to establish standing. And for a quasi-judicial matter, the testimony that has to be provided is limited to competent and relevant evidence that the board is legally permitted to consider. And therefore, in considering this application, the board can consider only competent, substantial, and material evidence from witnesses who have standing. And here, the board cannot allow SBA Towers to participate in this hearing in any fashion, and it must exclude any information that Mr. Horneck has provided because SBA has no standing. So if SBA were allowed to participate as a party, that would raise both constitutional concerns and also policy concerns, because it would violate the due process rights of the applicant, Tillman Infrastructure. And as the board may know, standing is a jurisdictional requirement, and the law in North Carolina is clear, and this is law that's based upon statutory authority and case law, and that only persons with standing have the right to participate. And the statute is NCGS 160A-393D, and it provides a statutory requirement for opponents to demonstrate standing. And for an opponent to demonstrate standing, you must demonstrate special damages, and those damages must be to the real property that that person owns, not that they are a tenant upon, which is what SBA is. SBA is not an owner of real property, but is simply a tenant. So first of all, SBA has no standing to participate because it owns no property in the area. It is simply the tenant on property that's located at 480 Old Siler City Road. And since it doesn't own any property on the tower side, or for that matter, anywhere in Pittsburgh, it lacks standing as a matter of law. And then secondly, SBA lacks standing because it is, cannot, it cannot demonstrate that it would suffer any type of special damages, even if it were a property owner, which it is not. And the general statute, 160A-393, is clear that you must be able to demonstrate special damages in order to have standing. And the leading case on special damages is the recent, or fairly recent, Cherry versus Weisner case, and that is the case that came out of the Raleigh Board of Adjustment matter. And I'm very familiar with that case because I, I'm currently the chair for the Raleigh Board of Adjustment, and I was on the Board of Adjustment when this case was determined. And that is the case where a home was proposed, a modernist home was proposed in the historic area of Raleigh in the Oakwood District. And the neighbor across the street, Ms. Weisner, objected to the modernist home and attempted to be involved in the Board of Adjustment proceeding. And the court of this case went to the Board of Adjustment, to Superior Court, and then to the Court of Appeals. And the Court of Appeals determined that Ms. Weisner did not have special damages because she was unable to demonstrate, even as an adjacent, across-the-street property owner, that any damages that she might suffer to her property due to this modernist home would have to be both specific to her property and distinct from the rest of the neighborhood. And then the other case that's particularly important is the- And then the other case that's particularly important is the Mangum, again, this is a Raleigh Board of Adjustment case. It's the Mangum versus City of Raleigh case. And this involves an adult establishment that was located near the airport. And in the Mangum case, two adjacent property owners challenged the adult establishment. And before the City of Raleigh enacted its Uniform Development Ordinance, it had its city code, it had information about adult establishments. And the city code stated that neighbors to an adult establishment would be especially vulnerable to noise, parking, and safety issues. And so these opponents were neighbors who owned the property, and they were also within the class of person that the city code specifically spelled out as those that would be potentially more susceptible to impacts from the adult establishment. And in that case, the Supreme Court determined that those neighbors would suffer special damages, it would not be shared by the rest of the community, and that they were in fact property owners. And here, again, SBA is not a property owner, and even if it were, it would not be able to show special damages. The tower is going to have no impact whatsoever on the property where SBA is located. And even if, even if SBA was the property owner, there is no information and no evidence that they would sustain any decreased value in the real property, not in the economic value of the tower. That is not the issue, it's on economic, decreased value to the real property. And so SBA's objection here is simply an effort to stop competition. And due to, and there's no provision in North Carolina law that would grant standing to a tenant due to objections to increased competition. So in summary, SBA is simply disgruntled competitor, nothing more, and it cannot demonstrate standing in this matter.
If I may, Madam Mayor and Board, just a couple of comments in response. Those of you who know development and commercial development at all must know that frequently there are long-term leases, might be 50-year leases, 99-year leases, where someone leases the land and then develops the property. You've got to be kidding me to tell me that that 50-year leasee or that 99-year leasee doesn't have the same rights with respect to standing as the owner of the property does. We are a long-term leasee, SBA is a long-term leasee. I want to point out one or two other things for the board's consideration. All this talk about Tillman, and Tillman has standing. Take a look at the application that was submitted back months and months and months ago. Tillman hasn't even signed that application. It was signed by some guy who's a consultant out of--
Objection, because we have not determined whether SBA has standing. So any information that's being provided by Mr. Hornick isn't necessarily to be straight into the court.
My response to that would be, if you say don't have standing, then I would like the opportunity to speak as a witness from the public, like any other nearby property owner would have the right. And I'll testify only about facts that are in the record. I won't argue, I might argue about the facts, but I won't try to present any kind of factual information. And I think there were a few things the board ought to be aware of. I just want to point them out to you before you make a decision. And that's, you know, if you say I don't have standing, allow me to testify as a witness from the public, because my client has a long-term lease of property less than half a mile away, and we've got an interest in the outcome, whether we're a party with standing or not. I can provide information to the board that may be relevant to your decision. And looking at the quasi-judicial handbook by David Owens and Adam Lovelady from the School of Government, provides that in some instances, boards may call interested individuals as witnesses to provide more testimony even though they lack legal standing. You're not required to do that, but you're allowed to do that. I ask you to allow me to do that.
Mr. Hornick, I've already given the mayor that quotation.
Yeah, thank you.
I would share Mr. and Mrs. Cameran's opinion as to SBA Towers. They don't have legal standing to appeal any decision that you want made. But if the board is interested in allowing Mr. Hornick to speak and to offer competent material and relevant evidence, perhaps he may do so. He doesn't have standing, I don't think that his client has standing.
I appreciate the opinion. Mr. Messick, your opinion, and I'm sorry, Madam--
Ms. Cameran.
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 Cameran, okay. And I appreciate those opinions. Not having had time to review the legal arguments, I'm curious because I just, I'm not, you're not, you're not bringing me along. You're not convinced me. I'm puzzled that what seems like real property is somehow dismissed. A tower is real property, and it's taxed. So I don't see why that wouldn't be a mark of standing.
SBA Towers is not the owner of the real property.
Do they own the tower?
They own the tower, but not--
The tower is real property.
No, sir, not necessarily. It's a fixture to the real property. It is separate from the land itself.
Is it personal property?
No, sir, it's a fixture.
Is it viewed by the county as an improvement to the land?
I'm sure that it's taxed by the county.
Then that's real property.
It is not the owner of real property within the meaning of the legal principle of standing. SBA is not an owner of the property. They are a tenant of whoever the landowner is.
So if a person is renting a house adjacent to the property, they don't have any rights either? Either only if they own the property?
As far as standing is concerned, it's the damage, it's the potential damage to real property. A tenant has no interest in the real property. They have a right to possession of the real property. They don't own the real property.
So the task of this board then would be to decide whether there is standing. And if not been, the case would be, the evidentiary hearing would be complete force as it stands.
Or you may allow to determine that SBA does not have standing, but you're going to allow Mr. Hornick to offer his confidence in it.
So how does the board feel that they have missed the proceeding? Do you want to hear from Mr. Hornick?
I would like to hear from him.
Even though he may not have standing.
Speaking of--
I didn't comment on whether he has standing or not, because just as Commissioner Vaughn said, he said, "Here's the tower on there, it is taxed." I know they don't own the property, however they are leasing that particular property. So to me, that's a little confusing and not clear.
Oh, so that's a tower.
Yes. But I think that to say that he would suffer damages just because he does not own the land that the tower sits upon, I have a little problem with that. But I would like to hear.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let me refer, board, to have your application packet. And if you look at page, third page, Special Use Permit Application. And this gets back to what you made a moment ago. A guy named Jeff Webb signed for Tillman, Tillman Infrastructure's. Jeff Webb works for BMTV. They may be a consultant for Tillman, but they're not Tillman. If you look at the site plan application, a couple pages after that, Jeff Webb signs. There's nothing in this record that indicates that Jeff Webb is an agent with authority to sign any application for Tillman. So I want to make that, that point clear. And that has, you know, arguing we don't have standing, and the applicant has standing, but no one from the applicant has signed the application. And I find that at least problematic and something that the board ought to consider as it reviews the application. The application's not signed by the owner either. Your, that is Mr. Mann. Your ordinance apparently doesn't require that, but I just point that out. And I do know that Mr. Mann was here to testify in support of the application. Why would he not? With respect to Mr. Smith's analysis, it wasn't an appraisal, it was an impact analysis. There's a difference, because he's not saying anything about the value of any property in particular. With respect to the Cobble Point comparables that Mr. Smith wrote about, the Cobble Point Tower was built before any of those homes were built. It's a 205-foot mile hole. It's like comparing apples and oranges to this 300-foot guide tower. The 924 Sanford Road Tower, it's 250 feet, built in 1992, but it is 50 feet shorter and likewise not guide. It's a different, different situation. So I think you have to weigh, not so much the credibility of Mr. Smith's report, I have no qualms about his credibility, but you really have to consider what weight, if any, to give to that impact analysis in trying to assess what the impact of this 300-foot guide tower will be on a road where, looking in the application itself, the photographs that they presented, the photographs are part of Mr. Smith's report, show this wide-open field, the houses across the street, the views that they will have of this, of this tower. The tower's not going to be placed back in the woods. The tower's going to be placed on the street side of the woods. It's going to be, as the Greenneys testified, it's going to be right in their backyard. And it's, in my opinion, hard to believe, again, going to, what weight do you give to that testimony about no impact on property value? It's hard to believe that a 300-foot tower in the backyard of a Greenney property is not going to have an impact on the Greenney property. So I'd ask you to consider those factors when you make your decision. And hopefully, the planning board will likewise consider some of those factors when it reviews this application and makes a new recommendation to you. On behalf of my client, we want you to obviously deny the application. We think that finding regarding harmony with the neighborhood in the area is the one finding that is not satisfied by this application. It's the one finding that we say with near certainty is not satisfied with this application. Others may be arguable, that one is not. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe at this point then, we have heard the evidentiary, the evidence from, from the hearing tonight. And I believe that we are now prepared to go forward and send this to the planning board at their next week. Is that correct?
I'd like to have the hearing over the questions that were discussed. And I would like to ask a question technically on the board.
Right, and we'll be happy to make those technical corrections without changing any of the substance of the application.
Can you speak to the applicant? This Jeff Webb, individual who signs for and conducts, and does he in fact have agency and the ability to make such an application on behalf of Tillman?
That is correct. And we have a representative from Tillman here, if you would like to hear from him directly.
Please.
And he can confirm that Jeff Webb has the authority to sign the application and to submit it on behalf of Tillman. Can you state your name and address, please?
I'm Jim Horner, 45 Kingfisher Way in Lewisburg, North Carolina.
How good are you in voice?
Tillman Infrastructure. So yes, all of our CNA agents have, have our authority to sign on our behalf. Sign voting agreements, applications for everything. So yes, they're qualified to sign for us.
Do you have a contractual arrangement with that individual?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And then just very briefly and within 30 seconds, because I know this hearing has lasted quite some time, but I would like to just remind the board that Mr. Hornick's client, SBA Towers, owns a 300-foot tower as well, that's located about a half a mile away. And we have presented competent, substantial, and material evidence of all of the requirements of the ordinance. And there has been no competent, substantial, and material evidence that has been provided to demonstrate that it would, that the tower would in fact impact property values. And then in regard to health hazards, I believe that there, the concerns were very sincere, but the North Carolina statutory law provides information that health hazards are not to be, our admissions cannot be considered by boards when considering applications. And then, and again, I believe that Mr. Hornick's testimony was simply to object based upon competition from the Tillman Tower. And again, he has presented no property information, no evidence to demonstrate that it would in fact have an impact on property values. And then in regard to harmony, he states that, he believes that perhaps all the other requirements had in fact been met, but he objected to the standard of harmony. However, Mr. Hornick's client has a 300-foot tower itself. And as I mentioned during my presentation, a private base case has been made that the tower is in harmony with the area because it is allowed as a special use in the RA to zoning district. And that is a, a private base case is a matter of law. Thank you very much.
I have one question, just, I may overlook it. From the base of the tower, how far out do the guide wires go from the base of the tower?
And Mr. Horner will, excuse me, Mr. Horner will speak to that as well.
Typically with guide towers, you go 80% of the height. From the center of the tower, you go 80% of the height, 120 degrees radius. I believe this one may be 70%, just to, I think, to get in from the wetland to the west of the property.
Just on that one side?
It would be on all, yeah.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
May I speak? I have time, I'm speaking. I live on the north of the property.
I believe we've concluded the evidentiary hearing. Did you swear in, sir?
No, I did not.
I'll make the motion to continue this whole hearing until our next meeting, this meeting in November.
Motion by Michael Fiocco to continue the hearing and leave it open until our next meeting in November. Is there a second? Seconded by Angela Walton, those favor seats indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion taken. So then I need a motion to go out of our evidentiary hearing. Moved by Michael Fiocco. Seconded by Angela Walton, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. And I need a motion to go into a standard public hearing so that we can hear the signed flag ordinance amendment that Jeff Jones will lead us in next. Is there a motion? Moved by Michael Fiocco. I need a second on the motion to go into regular public hearing. Seconded by Angela Walton, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now with the zoning text amendment and Jeff Jones.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Tonight we have a zoning text amendment, 2019-05, regarding the sign. Section, section of the zoning ordinance, our recommendation, staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing tonight and to send it to the planning board for a recommendation. I'll walk you through a little bit of what we've got going on here. There was a movement or request by the board to staff to review the signed ordinance in particular, how flags were defined and regulated within the town of Pittsburgh. Staff reviewed the current ordinance and has some-- Staff reviewed the current ordinance and has some text amendments that we brought forward that you saw at the public hearing, meeting setting of this public hearing. Staff is proposing to modify the definition of the sign and to add a definition of flag. One of the things that our current ordinance sort of takes a look at is any, includes some language that includes flags and how they may be interpreted as not being a part of the sign ordinance. We're proposing to break out flags and signs in and of themselves to be defined differently and so flags can be regulated as part of the sign ordinance. Additionally, the current ordinance in the zoning ordinance, the current sign section as it relates to flags, gives little guidance as to flags in general. It does say that flags, if they are erected, have to meet a 45-foot height and a 40-square foot maximum flag. There's no location on property that a flagpole must adhere to, other than it has to be on property. The proposal is to define a location, height, and size of flag as it relates to residential zoning and commercial zoning. The residential zoning would be a little less than commercial zoning in relation to the size of the flag, the height of the pole, and the location on property where that flagpole may be erected. In commercial districts, you would be able to do a little bit more in terms of height, size of the flag, and be a little bit closer to the property line. The draft ordinance did have a slight typo in it where it stated that in commercial zoning districts, the flagpole shall be set back at least 50 feet, but it's 20 feet. And the number 20 in parentheses, it should be 20 feet. Our goal was to, commercial lots can be smaller in size than residential lots, and have buildings that pretty much push those setbacks closer. So staff was thinking that we would allow for a flagpole to be a little bit closer to the property line, or to property lines in general in commercial zoning districts. There is some additional language added that if a flag was, is determined to be nonconforming as of the adoption of this ordinance, there would be an amortization period, one year or two, come into compliance for all those nonconforming flags. With that said, staff did do an inventory sweep of town, generally along the major routes in town. It would be Business 64 and Hillsborough Street and Sanford Road, generally 15501. We did not dive into the residential districts as much as we need to if an ordinance is passed, but this was, I wanted to give you all a flavor of what's out there today and what we might be trying to regulate. Staff found that there was approximately 30 flags throughout this stretch of town, so you imagine 64, Business 64 and 15501. And of those 30 flags, there would be approximately eight to nine flags that would potentially be rendered nonconforming if the ordinance were passed as proposed. We'll walk through some of those things. Oh, I wanted to point out too that the change, the proposed change is to exempt the C4 of the downtown district from any flag regulations. That's on the table. That's something for you all in the planning board to discuss and give guidance on. I felt like the C4 district was a little bit unique in and of itself in that these flag regulations on a commercial property in downtown would regulate, would essentially set no flags could be in the C4 district because of the size of the properties and how the buildings relate to the property lines. So as I said, there was around 30 flagpoles in this stretch of town that I went through and took a look at. There were 19 flagpoles in the O&amp;I C2 M1 zoning districts and seven flagpoles in residentially zoned districts, which is RA, RA15, RA2, and the MBPD district. C4 has four flagpoles, just for note there. And as I mentioned earlier, as currently written, staff believes there might be eight flagpoles, flagpole, that would either be too close to property lines or taller than the ordinance would allow, or too many flagpoles in general. So I wanted to walk you through what some of those affected properties might be. The new act center appears to be taller than 45 feet. The height of the peak of the entryway there is 40 feet, and those flagpoles extend beyond the 40-foot height of that roof line, so I believe those to be more than 45 feet tall. That property is on O&amp;I. The Boy Scout Hut, driving down the road towards town, would be close. It's in RA zoning, so that setback for that flagpole would be 50 feet from the property line. That would need to be measured from whatever property line was established out there. That was close enough, I wanted to point that one out as a potential problem or nonconformity that would be created. Additionally, the VFW appears to have, be too close and too many poles. The zoning for this property is on O&amp;I. The Laurel's appears to be too close. You can hardly see it but the little flagpole, it's got a couple of flags on it adjacent to the ride-up way there. That zoning is C2, so that flagpole would need to meet the 20-foot setback from the property lines. Mr. White's property along East Street here appears to be too close and too tall with the current, with the ordinance as drafted. That property is on RA. Chatham County Courthouse, courthouse complex, those three flagpoles appear to be too close. The property is on C2. The Pittsburgh Fire and Rescue appears to be too close. That property is on C2, so that flagpole would have to move somewhere within the 20-foot setback that's currently written. The newly erected flag that's on Sanford Road going towards Sanford on the right-hand side, it's Candice Burke property, appears to be too close. Property is on C2, so that flagpole would need to be moved back to at least 20 feet off the property line. So that's a flavor of what appears to be nonconformities that would, that could be created from adopting an ordinance as drafted. I wanted to give you all a flavor of the ones that we know of, that we, that maybe precipitated this discussion, and the ones that may be affected that have been in the community for a long time with an ordinance that could be adopted by this town. We have to make sure that we treat everyone fairly, and that's where, this is where we started from and where we are today. Doesn't mean that this will be the ordinance that we actually have to pass. Our recommendation, if, to hear from the public tonight for sure, send it to the planning board and let the planning board chew over it for a couple of meetings, and then we can get it back to you. Anything that's done this quickly, and we were doing it as a response to community requests, but this impact needs to have a little bit more time. And I know there's a need to expedite the amortization process and to get rid of what we don't want to see, but we might be remiss if we pass something and have unintended consequences of an ordinance that we don't want to have. It's going to be difficult to find that balance of something like the Pittsburgh Fire Department and their flagpole being five feet off the property line and writing ordinances that, you know, says that that particular location is okay in whatever ordinance we pass, whereas another location might not be okay at 15 or 20 feet because of what's being displayed. I don't envy us and you all during this process in the planning board, but we are, I mean, we're ready to tackle this as much as we can. A lot of this language came from Orange County. We lifted some of the language that they had gotten passed a year ago and are now acting on that language. We thought that was a good place to start. There was some language in our current ordinance, especially in the commercial districts that we brought over, on the height and the size of the flag. We sort of brought that over. We're okay with that in commercial areas today. I felt like that was a good, good, good start on the discussion of size and flagpole height in commercial areas. We also added in the commercial areas the ability to have at least three flagpoles with three flags each on those properties. So that's less than what we allow now because we allow as many as we want, but more than a residential neighborhood or a property. So certainly through this process, I'm ready to engage in a conversation with you all on the planning board. I think you all should hear from the public tonight, and I can answer any questions that you all may have, either now or at a later meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a substantial amount of work. I really appreciate it. And I also appreciate your responsiveness to the concerns. I think you've really dug into it here, and from the initial response we're hearing, there are some substantive concerns. We'll need to grapple with those. I really like what you've sketched out about kind of letting this gestate with the planning board. And again, I'll come here to hear more from the public.
Great, thank you.
Jeff, I want to clarify, I think what this document does that our current ordinance does not do is limit the number and allow a setback.
Correct. And height of, I know there is language, well, I know there's language that if you were to do a flag, it needs to be 45 feet tall and no more than 40 square feet. But then there's confusing language in the definition that says flags aren't, is not a sign. And so thus, an interpretation of that length, that definition, if you read it as a verbatim, you don't go any further into ordinance. You've, oh, okay, flags aren't a sign, and you're going to be able to erect whatever you want to. So it does-
You've got to look to the sign that doesn't require permission to find the flag.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly. So this helps clarify all those aspects of how we want flags to be displayed in town.
Is there ever language written such that the height of the flag is based on the structure that it's in front of?
Yeah, and that was in an early draft of mine, but we did some canvassing of town, and there are low buildings in town that will result in oddly hiked flagpoles. Probably even the fire department there, that flagpole would be a little smaller than what they currently have. But that is certainly something I looked at and something that the planning board could come back to.
Jeff, are these flags and these poles, we are considering, are you considering the flagpoles that are at these used car lots that's a flag from the ground to the tip of the top?
Those are banners. Those are-
They're not considered a flag.
They would be under the new definition because it's pretty much anything that attracts that flies and, let's see, I want to read it. Sign made of cloth, vinyl, or similar plant material that is attached to one side to a flagpole and designed to flow in the wind. But yeah, those would, those would as well. And again, I was more focused on the traditional flagpole and what is erected on that flagpole currently, but we would need to do a more inventory at the point where we're close to adopting some ordinances to make sure we know day one what's compliant, what's not.
Further questions for Jeff?
I have one more. What, are you making to find this a little better than what's, why do we take out the U.S. Congressional Protocol?
I don't know. I took it out. I do know why I took it out. I've not seen that language in any other ordinances that I've perused through during this time. That is something that is U.S. Congressional standards, not a standard of Pittsburgh. If we wanted to sort of write in what those standards would be, so the reader of the ordinance would have to go to another ordinance to know how they're being enforced upon, then I think we could do that. I would get, I would, I'd want to write it into the ordinance, not refer to some ordinance that we don't control.
But that doesn't have anything to do with like, flags that have staff?
You know, I need to read that some others in the audience may be able to tell us exactly what that congressional standards means, but we could research that through the process.
I think it has to do mainly with other flags being subordinate to Old Glory, to the nation's flag.
I've heard, I've heard that.
That's not the entirety of it.
Yeah, I've heard that as being an aspect of that congressional standard. There may be other things too.
So maybe this question for Mr. Messick, would that be allowed in your understanding as municipalities are allowed to regulate the manner of speech?
No.
So it might even be questionable legally?
That's the only question I would have. I mean, I, that's content. I mean, manner is content. I don't see how you can do that.
We'll definitely look at that as part of our drafting of the next version and report back whether we can or can't.
All right, then, if there are no further questions for Jeff, then Donald Cochran has requested time to speak on this particular amendment.
Thank you very much, Board of Commissioners. My name is Andy Cochran. I'm the commander of the VFW post here in Chatham, for Chatham County and for the town of Pittsburgh. My background qualifications, I was an assistant navigator on trikes and submarines, and I was a ship captain in the US Army. My background in honors ceremonies and the flags and, well, anything you want to consider in that, I am considered to be a subject matter expert in that in addition to being the post commander. A written letter, I think you, I think I sort of circulated it to almost everybody. I'd like to read it as a matter of record to powers. I'd like also, and I'd love to speak as a resident of Pittsburgh also. Okay, thank you. Dear Board of Commissioners, the Joe Wagner VFW post provides services for the veterans of Pittsburgh and all of Chatham County. We have learned of the proposed zoning text amendment 2019-05, see the annex that we have provided in this letter, and wish to express our opposition to it in its current form. Our post is in the O&amp;I zoning district, which would mean that we would have to be restricted to three flags and three flagpoles. We currently have six flagpoles with a total of seven flags. We have an individual pole for a flag and five military services, as well as additional pole where we fly the American flag over the POW MIA flag. We have an image which is below on here, which shows that basically on one side of the post, we have the flag with the POW flag, and on the other side, we have all five of the flags in the proper order in accordance with the percussional code. So this is one of the things that you would have to consider if someone does it, anyone can fly anything, anywhere, at any time, without having to worry about that there's any repercussion, which is set by the federal government, which standardizes how we fly our American flag. Setback on the property lines, the text is not clear. It has been clarified recently, but the setback requirements, the commercial zone and industrial zone, section 66 H2, where it states 50- zone, section 66 H2, where it states 50 to 20 feet. Either requirement also will be difficult with the arrangement of our lot. Our lot is approximately 82 feet wide, and the building is approximately 40 feet from the road. If we were allowed to keep all six flagpoles, we would need to move four of them to meet the 20-foot requirement. We would not be able to meet the requirement if it was meant by 50 feet. The language about flying flags in accordance with U.S. Congressional Protocol was removed, and we believe this is an important requirement that should be maintained. Exception for a veterans organization. This amendment must be passed. We ask for an exception for the veterans organizations such as ours to be added so that we can continue to display the flags of all five service branches in addition to the American flag and the POW flag. We appreciate your careful consideration of this matter. And this is our statement for the record as commander of the post. Is there any questions?
Could you give me a little update on that Congressional Protocol right here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you give me an update on that Congressional Protocol?
I can, I can send it to you, and we can get it to you.
In short term?
In, in short term, it is the federal regulation in which, under the code of federal regulations, flags are to be flown.
For service flags or Old Glory?
It's all federal flags. So if you want to say if the president is coming to town or there are honors or ceremonies that we would give, we would give them in accordance with that. So this would be what we would be using for our guidelines for flying, if you want to say, Old Glory, but the American flag, yes.
Thank you for weighing in on the subject.
And now for my personal comments, if you could, please. We just heard a comment from Mr. Jones, if I'm correct. You are the ordinance writer, you're the person who wrote this and drafted this and took consideration for this, is this correct, from public input? I noticed you made a comment which is getting rid of what we don't want to see. You made that comment here. What does that mean? Can you clarify?
These people have said that in public.
Then for the Commissioners...
Confederate flags.
There we go, Confederate flags. So based on that, as a, as a personal private person, I am wondering why, if you look at all the pictures that were drafted here and were put here, that governors' organization, that government organization would be punished for the erection of flags and keeping them erected when it's private flags that are not being regulated or done? So if you want to say courthouse, fire department, and all of the government fixtures were not taken into consideration, I guess that we're going to be moving all of those flags and costing our taxpayer money for displaying the American flag or moving things around. I'm not quite sure about how that is. And then our own post members have done, actually gone out and done measurements, and if you really took a look at it, if there was a parade, that was a military or veterans parade, no flags pretty much would be on the parade route. And that's just my final comment. Thank you.
Excuse me, are you saying that you would like to see an exemption for government buildings and that type for flying flags?
Our request is an exemption at least for the VFW, since we do represent all 5,000 veterans of Chatham County.
Yeah, well, I think you've stated that with your commander hat on, but with your personal hat on...
Yes, with my personal hat, I think it also should be applied to government buildings because our government buildings should be displaying the American flag as we do the pledge allegiance. I believe that we should have Old Glory or the flag flying in any one of those locations.
Thank you.
Is it possible, is that legal to do that, to have, to have risked a different set of ordinance for flags that are in front of government buildings? I mean, it does, it makes sense, we're going to have the American flag.
We'll have to look into it.
Yeah.
While we're here talking about exemptions, one that came to my mind was, you know, we're going to have a lot of residential properties that are going to be small lots. We've heard that as a product of Chatham County. And with a 50-foot setback, it's very likely there won't be a slot on a parcel. If a parcel's 50 feet by 100 feet wide, it's got to go right in the middle of the lot, but actually it can't do it. It can't get 50 feet from all lots. And so one of the exemptions that I thought of was a flagpole mounted to the structure would be exempt. Because I know we would eliminate a lot of properties from flying in flag. As we go through the process...
But if it's attached to the house?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to ask another question? I've got on the list.
The board want to hear from Heather Bitter, she's great, her comments.
Okay. So, do you want to come in?
Thank you. Heather Johnson, I own Chatham Business Services, and I'm located at 20 Sanford Road, my business is. I have been flying a six-foot flag that's attached to my office, that's attached to my building. So I wonder if the attachment, I have taken it down during this very difficult time because I don't want any side to use my flag during whatever demonstrations are going on. So it's in my office, but it's a six-foot flag. I've had it there for almost eight years. So has anybody considered the flag in, even in the C4 district that are attached to a structure?
There is a provision to exempt people in this, in this version.
In this version, yeah. And so if there was another hearing, or there was, not a hearing, but would there be a notification to the interested people in that district if you were to change how we would present our facade? Because to me, that's part of my building.
I think if there is an ordinance, whatever that ordinance comes about, and we would notify all non-performing flags that are currently being, at the time of adoption, whatever that ordinance is, and if there is a grace period of a year, that will be spelled out in the letter, and we would follow up 10, 11 months into that grace period to remind us that this is the ordinance. That's how I would envision it for it.
And like, Verley, they, they put their flag up during certain holidays, right?
It's in the window.
Right, in the window. So would it extend to that even, or where are you limiting that?
I would hope Verley still, in C4, I think C4 is going to be exempt unless something comes about.
It sounds like one of the things that's going to happen is the planning board will take him all over it and bring it back, and, and I just hope that... Shirley, thank you. And I just hope that the gentleman and lady with respect to the VFW understand what we're trying to do is, is, I think that this whole board and this whole group understands completely that of what nature your flag flying is, we're just trying to, to limit a controversial issue. Ma'am?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the public hearing part of it, and so I thought there was going to be another hearing per se of this, and so I didn't sign up.
There may very well be when it comes back from the, from the planning board.
I think there should be because I just don't think that a small group of people, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to demean you, but I think that the residents of Pittsburgh, as Mr. Fioke mentioned, we have flags out, and I'm going to fly my flag, and no ordinance is going to tell me not to fly my flag.
Well, your flag is not what we're worried about, ma'am.
But you're worried, you're taking away freedom of speech. I, and you're, and I'm sorry to say, I'm really, it saddens me that the board is being reactive to bullies. And I know you only consider bullies on one side, but bully, you know, there's bullies on both sides, and I really, you know, this is hurting. We are allowing this divisive nature to take over our country, our town. There was never a problem with flags. All of a sudden, there's a problem with flags, and we have to, we have to write an exemption for soldiers who, who fought for this country. We have to, we have to devise an exemption for them, and we have to devise an exemption for our county government and our state government and whatever else. I don't understand any of it.
Well, first of all, let me take your name and put you down on the list.
I'm sorry, yeah, I should have said something. Linda Bianvene.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. My husband is a disabled Vietnam veteran, and I'm telling you, I'm going to fly my flag. I don't care if it conforms or whatever, okay? And if, if you do this, you are going to hurt people in this town and cause more division than you ever thought possible, and I'm really, really sorry if you do that.
All right, thank you. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you, Linda.
Ms. Berry, I'd like to readdress you since you did bring my, my name back up and make a direct comment towards our post and what your intention is. I personally would think that if you think that you have a problem now, if you do limit the American flag, Old Glory as it is said to be, I think that you are going to, as Ms. Benavue has said here, find unintended consequences to the decision to do such because our post, and as we've written, we were very clear and very direct in what we're asking for, we are not allowed to take political sides in this matter. I'm not allowed to. So my comments on the personal side are different from what I made as the commander of the post. So in this, I hope you do understand that we, I get to wear two hats on this, and I get to represent both sides of it. But when it comes to personally, I agree with Ms. Benavue, and I'm sure my wife will represent me as a disabled veteran and what I have done for this country to protect the rights of people, of the freedom of expression. And I thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to assure everyone, no one is planning to take any rights away in terms of the flag. And let me say, I certainly do appreciate all your comments, and you being a veteran and being a member of the VFW. My father was past commander, a commander of the American Legion, post 283. He served in World War II and earned the Bronze Star. So let me say that I am very, very respectful of all veterans, and our intention was certainly not to have anything remove the American flag, of course not. That's what we believe in. So basically, that is not the intent of this. And basically, we are not trying to, to allow anyone to try to control or intimidate us as a town board. We're trying to resolve a situation that is very hurtful to a lot of people, but in terms of the American flag, absolutely not.
Thank you very much, and please remember, actions and what was written clearly wrote the flag out.
Yes.
And thank you very much for allowing us to present our...
We are, we are working on that. It's not, it was not, it was not, it has not been voted on, it has not been approved that that's what, it will be happening, because there's, again, that is not the intention. A lot of, I mean, all of us, although Americans, we certainly, most definitely, would not do anything to harm the American flag or harm anyone that displays the American flag. So basically, we are all representatives of the town of Pittsburgh and the citizens of Pittsburgh and Chatham County also. So we do this because we love the town, not trying to hurt the citizens of Pittsburgh. We're trying to do things to heal the citizens of Pittsburgh. That's why we went forward with our street fair, so that we could also heal our citizens and allow them the opportunity to have a good time in spite of what was going on. So that is all our objective is. But I can assure you, in reference to the American flag, that will not happen, sir.
Might I just say one more thing, though? The proposed language change in the ordinance does not refer to just the American flag. So be careful, because you are restricting speech if you are only singling out one thing and you know that, okay? I may not agree with it. I moved from the northeast here, okay? I love the south. I will not restrict anybody in the south from their beliefs or anything else. So I'm just saying, it's censorship, it's removing First American, I mean, First Amendment rights, free speech, just saying, that's all.
Well, I'll say that this process that the community goes through and by to develop ordinances, and I don't think I'm aware of any ordinance that made it through in the first draft, and that's what we're looking at is the first draft. So I appreciate all of the input that I'm hearing. I mean, yeah, I most definitely saw issues with it, and I've mentioned a couple of them that I've seen. So definitely appreciate the commentary, that type of participation that we need to craft the document as possible and correct.
May I ask that Mr. Jones also, if possible, or as it is being drafted or not, to be able to, for us to be able to see the draft for our input, as we are experts?
It would be on the record.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, can you sign me in also?
Yes.
Rick Murray, 21 Belmont Ridge Road.
Yes, the planning board, the report, it will be on the website, if you believe I'm wrong, so it speaks to this.
As it works through the process, it is a public process, so the document will be available online. If you can look for activity online, that would be helpful.
Or just let me know.
Could we get a mailing list perhaps, or an email list, and you could get a copy on it?
If you email me, I'll say whatever.
I'd just like to give Mr. Jones a couple of ideas for if you go through with this that would help him with the, this, the census hold on.
Why don't you directly correspond with them?
Sure.
Because I think that will really help.
I can do that.
If I'm still a hearing, it'd be nice to hear what you think. All right. Mr. Murray, why don't you come to the podium, please?
Sure.
The board would like to hear you. Get you on record. And your address, sir?
21 Belmont Ridge Road, Pittsburgh. We have a lot of homes in Pittsburgh that only have 35-foot setbacks. So if you use the 50-foot, you're going to eliminate a lot of folks' shoulder hatred. I would recommend something half the distance between the property line and the home, or at least out of the, out of the right way. And you've already got language in your zoning for the height, overall height of homes, don't you? Is it 45 feet or 35?
Yeah.
It would make sense to limit the height of the flagpole in residential areas to the maximum height of the house.
Are you seeing that these residential properties actually have a ground-mounted flagpole, or is the flag attached to, mold attached to the house?
Most of them are in the ground, more so now than they had been in years.
Okay.
Steven Osgar, we all had, we always had a flag down the front.
Randy Golding, why don't you come to the podium, please?
I just have a question for Mr. Jones to clarify. This is just for folks that go on the website. So, Mr. Jones, the information that was on the site and we, and we copied, is that the proposed change to the ordinance now?
So there were two documents on the website, so it looked like our, it said, the signed
ordinance from 1989, and I guess we're, I printed off those documents, and then I printed off your proposed amendment. So do we, was that a signed ordinance for Pittsburgh? It was in the agenda packet for the public to look at.
Any ordinance?
Yes.
As drafted was part of their packet.
There's a text amendment, it's drafted, and is that a revision to the ordinance or is that the existing ordinance?
They are the existing ordinance, but that's a revision to the existing ordinance. It was highlighted.
Right, so those, so what's on there are actually changing the existing ordinance with the typo that would be changed between the 50 and the 20. So I guess the question then, if, if that's a revision, there's nothing in the ordinance currently that speaks to setbacks?
No.
Okay, that was all, okay, that's clear. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there a motion now to go out of public hearing with respect to this signed ordinance?
Move.
Moved by Michael Fioke, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please, if you can get my thing, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, we are out of public hearing, and our next matter is citizens matters. Public expression speaker is John Justice, if you'd come to the podium.
Public expression speaker is John Justice, if you'd come to the podium. He's gone. Just couldn't make the cut, huh? So, next matter is commissioner and manager update with respect to things that are pending. Brian Bruce Beck, are you updating that?
I can just say a few quick things on the law and the county mayors. Welcome back. It's good to be back myself. I've been having a little trouble. The streets and utilities department next week will start leaf pickup, so I think the notices for those who are posted and are being taped to refrigerators right now is being, I'm sure. Let us know how that's going. C E M Smith, you'll recall, is working with the town on the water treatment facility, our current water treatment facility. They are also purchasing or ordering, I should say, the pilot testing equipment and have that in, begin that program and we can begin to feedback to you when that commences and how that's going. So we'll report, provide an update on that soon. The bike, bicycle and pedestrian plan, open house was held last week, last Tuesday. You know, Mr. Jones is on the spot with it tonight, but do you have any comments?
Oh, yeah. It was well attended. It was Tuesday night. Your house resulted in some new ideas that we hadn't thought of and then some ideas that, oh, yeah, we thought about that and some folks saying, okay, great. The public document that will be released to our public and to review will be out later this week and that will take a couple months' process. So we're looking to have this back to the law in front of the plan board and to the law either December or January of next year. So far, it's going really good. We've got a lot of great feedback. Good to the county health department for all the assistance that they have given to the town and to this project. I think we're gonna have a pretty good document at the end of the day and it will help us make decisions on future debt and bicycle projects and some things to fund. The good thing about having a plan is state policy just changed. I think we heard about this in part, but state policy just changed, so that you have a plan and it has pedestrian and bicycle improvements on that plan for road widening or road improvements. Community will actually do those as part of the project.
And they're called betterments.
That's right. So having a plan.
When they do.
When they do the project.
Yeah.
Good call, project.
We can have everything.
Still good. And the betterments, it's been renewed by this new policy, but having that plan in place, keeping that plan up to date, not only when we pass it in January, but revisiting that yearly to make sure our car and any of the new projects come along, but that it's on a plan so we can use that policy to our advantage by the future.
Yeah.
Also, before I left last week, I had a meeting with the architects for the new town regarding some other design issues and in particular our audiovisual component. We'd like to come back to the board, press some dialogue on that possibly in the next meeting. So I'm looking forward to discussing some of that information with you as that moves forward. Also had a meeting with the E D C, the Chatham County Economic Development Director. We discussed some possibilities for an economic incentives program for the town, which is something I think you'll recall that we were kind of batting around a little bit when we were discussing incentives for the motel project at Moser. So, you know, there may be some opportunities for us in the future, I think, to apply that. And I think before we move forward, the consideration of any other possible incentives, we need to probably work on, you know, actually developing the ground rules for the incentive. So I'm looking forward to presenting some information to you on that and getting your feedback as well. And then last, I mentioned that our customer service representative over at the Chatham Mills office, Terry Buchanan, has worked with us, I think, about three years, is gonna be briefly moving on to a position, so we'll be posting that position. With that, I'll tap out. If you guys have any questions or concerns, let me know.
All right. I have no updates to offer because I've not been here for two and a half weeks. Are there other meetings or associations that commissioners have been to that they would like to report on? I did listen to the tape of the last meeting and there were, there were a lot of things going on. It was just really amazing to hear everybody talking about issues and parts that they were involved in. Anything new?
I was gonna hear a report on that speech there. I was working, so I didn't get to go, but.
What happened?
It was Saturday.
It was good. Good times.
Good day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good energy. Lot of good vibe going on.
Lot more vendors. It had, oh, the wig was building, no longer. So there were vendors there and then they had three jumping, jump, bump, jumping out. So that was very, very nice. Food was good, the bands were good. It was very, I think everyone enjoyed it.
And for the first time in years, H T Jalera opened up their facility there. So the bands and the stage were no longer in First Citizens, it was down in the Jalera lot and sort of surrounded by a number of vendors that were appropriate, cigars and beer. It was quite a.
Two stages, really. Yeah, it was nice.
Well, I attended my first meeting of the TarPO and the representative for Pittsburgh and municipalities. Jeff just mentioned one very important development. The other interesting thing is that N C D O T has always had their complete streets design guidelines, but you had to opt in, you had to convince them that's what you wanted to do. Now you have to, if you're gonna build a street, D O T standards, you have to opt out, to convince them that you're not gonna put in bike lanes, you're not gonna put in sidewalks, multi-use paths. So very interesting meeting. May treat, we will talk about it in just a minute. We're working really hard trying to establish the welcome center at the old Capital Bank building and the more I look at that building, the more I really desire that siding to be on. It really sticks out a little sore from, so we're hoping that that happens. And had a conversation with some folks who were talking about the idea that courthouse circle might not be available very late. And Heather Johnson brought it to our attention, that we need to start thinking about a different location. Yeah, and I think we should have Plan B in hand and the thought that we had was to be in the corner of the Blair Building where we've got the brick favors and so that may be an option, but I think P B A needs to really think about options. Yeah, Maria?
We do. That is our option. We've already spoken with the county about it.
Okay.
I would prefer to go forward and keep it on the circle, just like we did with the street fair. Don't let this situation change what we do. And I've spoken with the county about it, the manager and the commissioner.
Okay.
Do our best to keep it there on the circle, hopefully get the barricades gone if there's still there at that time, just for the day. Plan B and that would be on that.
Any other reports? If so, then let's proceed to the resolution under new business, which is a resolution in favor of Main Street Pittsburgh establishing a welcome center at 37 Hillsborough Street in downtown Pittsburgh. Whereas the town of Pittsburgh is a member of the Main Street Program, which is administered by the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and whereas the town of Pittsburgh has established the Main Street District with a zoning overlay and a map indicating the properties within the district, and whereas the town of Pittsburgh endorsed a downtown vision plan on June 14, 2014, and whereas the town of Pittsburgh has determined that the economic vitality and unique qualities of historic downtown Pittsburgh are important to preserve, revitalize and enhance, and whereas the town of Pittsburgh works through the local nonprofit Main Street Pittsburgh, whose mission through Main Street America supports a commitment to creating high-quality places and stronger communities through preservation-based economic development. And whereas public spaces are valuable and important within the town and especially the Main Street District. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the town of Pittsburgh supports efforts by Main Street Pittsburgh to lease 37 Hillsborough Street, improve said property and utilize the property as space for a Pittsburgh slash Chatham County Welcome Center with potential partners and users of the space, including but not limited to the Chatham County Chamber of Commerce, the Pittsburgh Business Association, Pittsburgh Sellers City Convention and Visitor Bureau and similar organizations. Furthermore, we have resolved that the town of Pittsburgh supports efforts by Main Street Pittsburgh to secure short-term and long-term funding support for the Welcome Center from public and private sources, including but not limited to Chatham County, adopted this 28th day of October, 2019. Is there further discussion that you'd like to have on this? That's the thing, is you say it all?
Okay.
Does it approve?
Second.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilson Colley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was wonderful. Very exciting. Next, we have a request from the Pittsburgh A B C Board to routine working capital. Hugh Harrington. I think, I think you get a gold star for here at the Harrington.
Yeah, I've been here lately. I know. I always try to be brief tonight, as brief as possible. Come bearing good news, I was about the good financial performance of the A B C store. These are some copies I'm distributing to town already, has a copy disc, it was a summary report by our fiscal year 2019 through 20, our auditor, final financial report, and this is summary, the way he tells us, this is the one that really tells you the story about the A B C board performance. So I'd like for you all to take a look at it. And what you see there is a very nice trend. Financial performance, in particular income from operations, key metric there increasing year over year since 2015 looking good, which is why we were able to distribute it last year to the town, $130,000, $130,477 to the town. One thing I wanted to bring to your attention there, there was a final distribution, in addition to our usual quarterly distributions, there was a final distribution there for And that was provided based on, going back, reminding that, you know, we're limited to amount of working capital we can retain by statute without your permission. In the past, you all have permitted the A B C board to retain extra working capital at a split of 60%, that's 40% for the board as a distribution for the purposes of us tucking away money for a future A B C board or a new A B C board. Second, I mean, excuse me, a new store or maybe improvements to the current store. But that's what that money's tucked away for. So what we're asking for tonight is that you all would continue to support that resolution or similar, that we can continue to retain working, extra working capital for those type, that type of improvement. So that is the main request for you all tonight. Any questions about that?
Questions for Hugh Harrington.
Hugh, good to see you in the chair position. I've been involved with the ABC operation, I think ever since I got on the board. And Hugh was the commissioner here and was with me when we got in there and had some difficult times and turned the ship around. So it is good to see you in the chair position. One of the things that I would like for us to consider tonight, and this will be the first time you hear it, so I'll understand if you're not ready to act on it. But we've been doing this 60-40 split for, I think, four years? Has it been four, maybe five years? Where they're retaining the capital to make investment on a new facility. Well, we're talking about a new facility and it's called the Welcome Center. And we are looking to raise funds in any way we can. We've got some private sponsors, over 20,000 in that. We will be going to the county and getting over some money. We are trying to partner with the Chamber of Commerce to lease space in the building so that we can have a nice-looking place. I think I was getting places from the contractor today and it looks like we're gonna be under budget and wasn't budgeted. And our first year of operation is about $65,000 to do this because we've got up to the building. And the owner has agreed to do a design grant, strip off the wood, take off the fake roof. And if the brick is in good shape, even if it's, it's not, we have to do something.
Yeah.
The brick. Yeah. And it looks like we've been able to see some of it and it looks pretty good. And so what I would like to propose is if we could get some of that money that the A B C store is reporting and stashing. And what I would propose is changing this equation, not drastically, but saying 55-45 and that we generate, if we had the similar revenue picture of $204,000, that would bring another $10,000 to the town and if the town could then earmark that for the Welcome Center or 8,000, maybe 10,000, if we're willing or able to do that, I think that would be a really helpful contribution to this effort.
You're not talking about using all of those proceeds?
No, I'm talking about just 8,000. No, just 8,000. If it were the 204 that we're looking at right now, that would mean 55%, 112 would go to, would stay with the A B C board and 45, 92,000 would come to the town as opposed to 81, and of that 92, 8,000. So it would still deliver more money to the town where it was 81,000 or 82,000 if you gave 4,000 to the town. And basically change the equation from 40% to 41% and then earmark that 8,000 over to visitors of the Welcome Center.
The reason I'm asking is that, you know, we are attempting to work on affordable housing.
Yeah.
Situation. And that was one of the recommendations, that we possibly use those proceeds to build affordable housing. Yes, I won't call it what the county calls it, but some type of affordable housing fund.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm asking, that it wouldn't be off of it.
No, no. It'd be a very small, I think it's a more fortunate.
Okay.
Be able to consider, not that. This be a one-time, one-time, you can go back to the 60-40.
Yeah. I may add, that's, our auditor reminds us every year to come to you all to verify your agreement to, whatever that distribution is, whether 60-40 or 55-45 or whatever that is, so come back again next year, it's something that, you know, you've done for a while and appreciate it.
Mr. Bruce Beck, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, the A B C are aware, I think, every budgeting discussion and every time that Mr. Nass would come in and update, A B C board has hit exceeded its marks, both in terms of their projections and our budgetary projections. So there's a good performance history there. You know, as far as procedurally, if you're interested in doing this, then you just, you can see the requested action there, you can just modify that 60% excess working capital to 55% excess working capital.
55 percent excess working capital and misadjusting that.
And we would come back on an extra distribution.
That money wouldn't necessarily be immediately available, it's just, I mean, how that works. We'll need it in the next couple of months. There's a lot of hell over recent business. I'll make a motion to modify the distribution from 60 percent to 55 percent and earmark $8,000 of proceeds to go to the Welcome Center.
Okay. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilson-Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner. We still just retain excess working capital. I'll save the best for last, I come bearing money. We're already finished the first quarter of the new fiscal year. So I'm pleased to leave with you all to law enforcement, $1,786 distribution. And to the town, another $12,338. And just to add that, you know, we're really on track to even having a much better year than last year already, so I look forward to bringing you all more order checks. So thank you all.
Thank you, Hugh. We really appreciate it and your services.
Thanks, Hugh.
Under old business, finally, a final subdivision plaque with you, Whispering, fine subdivision, Victoria Bailey, lead-up in this matter.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, this is subdivision 2016 dash 03. The subdivision ordens for the town states that the final plaque of a major subdivision will be reviewed by staff, the planning board, and finally, the town board of commissioners prior to its recording of the lots. Windstar Properties LLC has submitted the final plaque for Phase 1 of the Whispering Meadows subdivision. The preliminary plaque for this subdivision was approved by the board commissioners on May 22nd, 2017. The first phase of the subdivision creates 12 out of the 33 previously approved lots. These lots meet the requirements of plus or tech development and more 15 district. Since preliminary approval, the applicant has built the streets and utilities required for the first phase of development. This will become a town street with public utilities upon acceptance by the board. The planning board reviewed this plaque at their meeting on October 2nd, October 7th, 2019, and recommended approval on a vote of six to zero. Staff is recommending approval of the final plaque, subject to issuance of any additional local state permits.
Questions for Victoria?
Is the fire marshal okay with the turnaround of the dead end street?
The applicant has spoken with the fire marshal and has been in discussion. Does she want to come up here and talk about your latest?
Talk with him directly, and we're in agreement that we're going to, you saw the math, there's the half cul-de-sac, third cul-de-sac, whatever you want to call it. Right here?
Yeah.
And we, Phase 1 ends here, and we're in agreement that I'm going to stone this up and give them a turnaround right there.
Is that going to be within a public right-of-way designation or just on the parcel?
Just on the parcel, as you're saying.
And he's satisfied with that?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Very good. Any further questions for Victoria or Murray? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Michael Fiocco.
Second.
Seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. And lastly, the super allocation guidelines, it gives that special authority also. Persevere, persevere, it sounds like a good word to go with this.
In the line of duty.
So we had talked last time about the super allocation guidelines, and there were a few minor changes that we made. Those were reflected in your package. I have received a couple of additional clarifications that were missed of where zoning compliance is not referenced as zoning compliance certificate in a few places. So I've made those changes since your copy. But other than that, I think there's one other item on the last, page 3, item E. There was a request to say instead of once the town acts on, the super allocation request, and once the town approves, the super allocation request. And so we agree with that recommendation of clarification wording, but none of these were substantive in changing any content.
I didn't explain the approves versus acts on, but it says, once the town acts on, it's going to say that that sewer flow is allocated but not yet permitted. Well, if the act is to deny it, it should go on the allocated not yet permitted. So approves it, then it does.
So I do have those nice couple of things, but other than that, the document you have, I do have copies of the one with the changes as I've just described. They were very minor, so other than that, if there are any other comments, questions, or feedback, I'd be happy to take those, or if you are ready to move forward with this.
Questions for?
I'll welcome that.
Questions for this, this, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve with the tax changes, including identifying a zoning compliance certificate as such and not just a zoning compliance.
Second. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilson-Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, move carries. Thank you. All right. We're at that point where we need to hear commissioners' concerns, and we all would start with Jay Pho.
Thank you. I don't have anything else, I just want to thank the staff and Chief Crutchfield for the outstanding job at the street fair. Staff and all, I think everything went well. Appreciate all the hard work.
I just talked to some, there was a post about Grant Leonard, who is working to get his Eagle Scout certification. He's been making these B-homes, which accommodate lots of different kinds of bees. There's, look, there's Mason bees, leaf cutter bees, solitary lots, and others. So it's called a bee motel. So I just want to commend Grant Leonard, he's given, he made these himself, and he's been giving them out all over town to people who have gardens and, and those are lovely projects.
I have a concern that has to do with our recent contract that I knew nothing about, and I voted to approve it. And that was a contract to award Nancy Clean Energy Tech Center, a contract of which Commissioner Barnes is an employee. And I am troubled by that, that there was no mention of the fact that your organization was in consideration for a contract which was placed on a consent agenda. There was nothing in our package to indicate that we had, that that was part of the consent agenda vote. And honestly, I would have expected you to make that known, make that known.
It's fascinating, Commissioner Fiocco, because I recall discussing my work with this board at work sessions, at least three occasions, my employment with Clean Energy Technology Center, always emphasizing my work on the transportation team. In fact, in one-on-one conversations with you regarding EV charging stations. And indeed, I regret that I wasn't able to stay for that meeting. I was called away for an urgent health matter, had two children in need, and a wife in need. And I had indeed prepared to explain that, to dismiss, to dispel any possible questions about what's been alleged as conflict of interest. But I was asked, why didn't I mention it in March when this was first brought up? And frankly, my own analysis was that state law prevents me from recusing myself in this matter, because I have nothing to do, because I am on a completely separate team from the team that's going to do the analysis. My salary is paid through federal highways administration funds, I have nothing to do with solar work. And I'm confident that I discussed this at work sessions, that this was an opportunity for town to avail ourselves of really cheap, low-cost analysis, so that we could assure ourselves and the taxpayers that anything that we do on this new town hall with regard to solar or renewable energy of any sort makes sense and has a specific payback period. So what's your concern, sir?
My concern is the fact that you have stated here that you were prepared to make the statement until you were called away unexpectedly. So you were prepared to make it known, because you recognized that there was an issue. However, since that time, you've not done so. You returned to the meeting an hour later, and you didn't say anything about it.
I beg your pardon, I did so by email. You received an email from me, sir.
When did you send that to me?
I looked that up.
You mean, while you were away attending to your children, you sent an email?
No, sir. I'm talking about after I responded to the Chatham newspaper.
So you're talking about today?
I don't remember whether it was today or not.
The fact of the matter is, this board voted on something, that it had no knowledge that your firm was involved in.
You? I don't think that's true at all. I think that you'd seen the proposal in writing, in hard copy, in March. I circulated it through this board.
I have little record of it.
I didn't want to collate it myself either.
It was printed out and circulated by myself in March.
So you don't, you don't have a problem with the fact that this board was not aware that it awarded a contract to your company?
Frankly, Commissioner Fiocco, I think it's implausible that you think you weren't aware that I worked for that center.
I'm not saying I didn't know that. I did know that you worked for it. And I, you were in work sessions saying, advocating for this service, and you boldly, I thought at the time, stated, and my company does this work. And I thought, well, my gosh, that's pretty amazing, but surely you would never try to get the work, and then you did that, and then you didn't say to anybody that evening on the consent agenda, when you knew it was your contract that was being voted on, or was included in the, in the consent agenda? No, I knew you worked for that firm, and I knew you were proposing that this service be performed.
It was clearly stated in the consent agenda.
It is not.
No, it's not.
It is not.
No, it's not.
It does not say.
It doesn't say clean tech.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't say clean tech. Doesn't say it?
No.
Well, I, if I may, just on the procedural matter, the board had discussed the issue at work at at least one set of work session. Mr. Bonnet's had circulated information regarding his relationship with clean tech and that this work had mentioned that it should be a part of the town hall project, and we should do an analysis of solar and photovoltaic technology. That particular meeting, the consent agenda included a budget modification to, included a project budget modification for town hall to allow that money to be used for that, for that project. I signed the contract, much like I signed for $29, $2900 off my head. I signed the contract, Heather, as finance director, beautifully verified that money was available in the project budget. And, I mean, oftentimes, simply put, oftentimes contracts, once the money is budgeted and it's pretty clear on what the board knows what it's for, that's, that's how we, that's how we shepherd in projects and contracts.
There's no, there's no, I'm not contesting what it's for. I'm contesting not being informed of who it's with, when the who it's with is one of the board members or organization.
It's not a term, by the way. It's not organization.
In fact, if you do some work in that area, makes that whole thing quite moot, frankly.
Steely.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor.
I believe the head of your organization is going to sign the contract.
The question is, I know, just to think on.
When we were voting on town hall, I forgot what it was, but it had to do with the fact that my parents, I mean Jason, spoke. I don't remember exactly what it was, but I consulted with Paul Messick, and he said, asked the question, do you personally stand to gain from it? And I did not. So it was something I felt that I would be recused for, and he said, no, because I didn't stand to personally.
And did you make it known to this board to consider that?
Well, I asked, I asked Paul Messick here at the meeting.
Exactly, because you put it forth for all to see. We did not see. And that's what I've got a problem with. And I think it's disingenuous to suggest that a member of an organization, because you're not in a particular department, is, has no obligation to make it known to his fellow board members of the potential for his company to be used contract or services.
Well, I understood that this was a company that John worked for. I think we talked at a couple, on a couple of occasions about wanting to make sure that solar capability at the town hall was something that was well-covered and understood. I think the fact that it didn't happen that night, you know, because he was, he came to the meeting and then left, it's gendered as personal matters, I think, I don't think that it should bother anybody, and I almost, quite frankly, think that it's very odd that it's being raised at this particular time, two weeks before the election.
Who raises it?
You do.
At this meeting? This is the first time you've heard of this?
Well, I've been going, somewhere to have.
Well, there's been a lot of information about it, and it's not coming from me?
Well, it didn't tonight.
Well, exactly. You learn things and you want to speak to them.
Commissioner Fiocco, do you have a motion?
No, I have a concern. I have a statement.
I hear your concern, and I believe that I've addressed your concern.
Well, and I'll tell you the other concern that I have, and I'm interested to see you all hear this, but Mr. Bonnet's has been stating on his campaign trail that what distinguishes him from the rest is that he has no money to interest. And he is backed by a pack of, a pack of certain people, and I don't appreciate it. So for it to be made known that you did not make it known that your firm was, only if you're.
That is not a firm, sir. It's a nonprofit organization.
That entity got a contract.
$2,000, excuse me, $2,900 worth of analysis that probably in the private sector would cost, cost $5,000 or $10,000. that probably the private sector would cost, cost five or ten thousand dollars. That, that team did that, offered that contract as a favor to the town of Pittsburgh. The center is privileged to do this work in a nonprofit capacity precisely for this kind of reason, to support local governments in working towards clean energy future. So it really does seem like a tempest in a teapot, Mr. Feo.
So you don't feel that you had an obligation to make it known?
I'm not going to say that, no. I, I had made notes and prepared in my notes to speak to this possible question.
You did?
Yes, sir. And I, I take great exception at this, sir. My children were sick, and I'm becoming, I'm, I'm becoming very angry about this. I take it very offensively. I take great offense at this. I left for an urgent health matter. I'm spending great amounts of time away from my children for special needs. Autoimmune encephalitis is nothing to smile about, sir. It's disgusting, frankly. What you're doing, what some other people are doing, chat list, is despicable.
I've always thought that this board, its members, and its demeanor in public have always been something that we can be very proud of. And I'm very, very sorry to have this tonight.
Me too. Mayor Perry, I apologize for raising my voice.
I think we should proceed.
Well, I'd just like to say one thing, and I'm kind of caught in, in some of these negative campaigns going out through there, and John, you have made it, quite frankly, several forums that you had no money interest in, or nothing to gain with the town of Pittsburgh, and this is where this is coming from. I, I cannot recall any time that you had ever said anything that North Carolina Clean was getting this contract, or was doing this work for the town for the solar system. It was definitely not on the agenda that night that we voted on it.
Mr. Pharoah, Commissioner Pharoah, I apologize if you felt like you were blindsided, you voted on something you weren't aware of. It was never my intention.
I wasn't blindsided, but it was no information that it was your company.
It's not my company.
Well, your, your employment, your employment.
I'm privileged to work at that firm, that organization.
Let me just say, I think that it is something that we need to know, and going forward, we all should not let everybody know, or accuse ourselves, because I have tried to recuse myself from a situation, and that was back when Springdale was going to be widened, and I thought I had an interest in it, but I really didn't, because my godson lived on that street, and I didn't, and played close to the street, so, but he connected to me, I did not have to recuse myself. So I think it's a matter of, we just need to know and inform people, even if it doesn't directly affect us that I work for this, or I live near this, or my grandchildren does this, or my child.
Mr. Paul, I appreciate the sentiments, and I agree with you, wholeheartedly, and I, I do feel that I had communicated that in work sessions, thought that I had made many errors on many occasions, talking about these subjects related to my direct work, which is transportation. And I regret that any of you might have had a misunderstanding or a lack of clarity. And I can only tell you that my intention was to have anticipated there might be questions, and so I didn't want to dispel any questions. I can show you my notes from preparation for September nineteen.
Do you have any concerns you need to address?
I didn't really have any concerns, I'd just like to commend our, the town of Pittsburgh, the staff for doing such an excellent job at the street fair and public work, they did an excellent job. There was a lot of hard work. And I'd like to commend our Pittsburgh Police Department and Chief Crutchfield for all that they not only did at the street fair, but they've been doing for the last month or so. And we really do appreciate that, along with the sheriff's department and other police officers from nearby cities, such as Liberty, because they are here trying to make sure that everyone is safe, and Cary, if I'm not mistaken, Carver, and I think it's one other, Apex.
We've had Apex ramps for Liberty, Carver, Cary, and UNC campus police help us throughout the whole week. Off the top of my head, I may have forgotten somebody.
Well, I'd like to commend all of you, and Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, of course, the sheriff's office has been working, and they've had other, I know that Orange County, County Sheriff's Office have been here assisting too, and I think the Hart County, Orange Management, County Commerce Management, Fire Department, CMS, everybody's been working together for several weeks now.
And I'd like to commend all of you all for doing such an excellent job. We really do appreciate it, because that's a lot of hard work, and it's a lot of times that the offices are not off, and I know they're supposed to be off, off duty, so it, it can be a long, long, long week, a long month, but thank you again, and I do appreciate it. If you would extend my thanks to all, I would certainly appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. I'll definitely do it.
Thank you.
John Bonnet?
Thank you.
All right, then, is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to request of the beginning of the...
Please, please. I got a ten o'clock.